The time is 4:31 PM. Pelican Rapids City Council Meeting of 30 April 2024 is called to order. I ask you in our council chambers if you would please sign in on the clipboard by the back table before you leave this evening, if you have not already, and please put your phones on vibrate. Roll call of members. Patty?
Steve Strand.
Here.
Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Kurt Markgraf.
Here.
Steve Foster.
Here.
Mayor Brent Fraser.
Here. Want to welcome each and every one of you here in our city council chambers this evening, although those joining us by Zoom. Remember, our city council meetings are in our Pelican Rapids YouTube channel and also on Channel 14 on Wednesday evenings. Just have a couple announcements for the next couple of weeks. I want to remember that Sunday, May 12th, is Mother's Day. Don't forget that. And also, our next city council meeting is on Tuesday, May 14th, 4:30 PM at the city council chambers. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two, citizens' comment. Anyone here to speak to citizens' comments if you are not on the agenda? Anyone for citizens' comments? Okay, seeing none. Item number three additions, deletions to the agenda. I have a couple additions. Item number 12, if you want to, there's two bullet points to add. CEDA, C-E-D-A, Annual Meeting. CEDA Annual Meeting. And then another bullet point is Minnesota Housing Partnership MOU. Minnesota Housing Partnership MOU. And another addition is item number 20 is Park Board. Item number 20 is Park Board. Any other additions or deletions?
I move to approve the agenda with the addition, the bullet points of CEDA Annual Meeting and the Minnesota MOU, whatever, and then 20.
Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Item number four, approval of consent agenda, which I will read. Item number four, A is approval of the council minutes from April 9th, 2024. Four, B is approval of the council payable listing. Four, C, one is approval of park board minutes from February 12th, 2024. Four, C, two is park board minutes of March 18th, 2024. Four, D, one is liquor store report, which is in your packet. Four, D, two is utility report from March 2024, which is in the packet. Item four, E is Pelican Rapids Chamber of Commerce gambling permit for July 13th, 2024, which is Pelican Fest at E.L. Peterson Park. Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. At this time, we will recess our city council meeting to go into a public hearing regarding tax abatement. Remember, in our public hearing, we can take no votes. It's just for discussion, then we'll take action when we go back into the city council meeting. So at this time, I'll call on Administrator Royson to address this tax abatement.
All right, this is very similar or exactly the same as you've done in other applications for this, for building a new house. So Tammy Bakin of, is planning on building a house on 924 Maplewood Drive, and she applied for this tax abatement that's, which is that $5,000 or five years, whichever comes first, so. Exactly the same as those others in the past few years that we've done, so.
Any questions from the council?
I'll make a motion to.
We can't make a.
Oh, we forgot we're in a hearing.
There's anyone, or you can ask for anyone's.
Yeah, any questions from the council? Hearing none, is there any questions from the public in our city council chambers or those joining us by Zoom? Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public before we close the public hearing? Any questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll reconvene our city council meeting. What's the council's wishes?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried, thank you. We're on to item number six, industrial park lot, Jerry Henry. Jerry's with us here this evening. At the last city council meeting, he handed out, there was two, two documents, and I'm sure we've had a chance to read them. Jerry, do you have anything else to say, other than what's in your documents?
Well, we do have a comment.
Yeah, if you could address the microphone, please.
I don't need to great deal of your time. I would like to drop these off for the council members. What's this regarding is an easement that I was giving by the city when I purchased land to build buckets and construction attachments and that. And a couple of the comments I would like to make is this, is, well, a very important one is this, when I heard that there were buildings for sale here, I came and looked at, and I believe there were old dynamic homes buildings. I found one that might be just perfect for me to expand my business, and there was two gentlemen that came down from the city, and that was Jim McDonald and Richard Jensen, and wanted to show me the building, and I liked it. And I actually came back the following day to look at it more, and then they pointed out that the building that would be ideal for me to expand my business is surrounded by city property, and I had no access whatsoever to it to get in with big semis, because that's what's required to haul buckets that can weigh up to anywhere from 20,000 to 30,000 pounds. And so consequently, I, I did not make an offer, nor did I buy it, and the following day, I did get a call from the city, and they said, we have looked at this, we own the land around that building. Would you come back and look one more time? We think we have a solution for you. And I did, I came back a third day then, and actually, I brought my wife along to show her, and so she was also there at this meeting, and their solution was this, is we will give you a, they called it a easement by necessity, and we own that property, and we can do this in perpetuity, they called it, but, and that was fine. And I said, you're serious, you can do this? And they said, definitely we can. Are you serious about buying the place? And we actually had a wonderful discussion there. We actually had a Scandinavian agreement, I guess, we shook hands on it, and it was a done deal. Their price was fair for the building, and they were going to guarantee me a permanent easement, and that's why I want this at least to go into the record, because that's important, because, like I said, I did have, both myself and my wife were there, and that's what they had offered us. They solved the salute, or the problem, and I appreciate that. I've appreciated it for so many years, that, by the way, in the 20s, when we got in that big pergola down in the park next to your river and that, I donated that to the city, and I was very happy at the way this, you know, they treated us. I've always felt I owed the citizens a treat like that, and it's been used every, well, every picnic down there, it's used, and it's a beautiful thing I, that we did for them. That's really the joy, the end of it. We, they solved the problem, I accepted their solution, and I, I, I should fault myself for some of it, this was a nice big purchase for me, I should have asked maybe more questions even, you know, but they were just plotting out the, your park then, way back, this is 1990, by the way, and they were just plotting it out, and so I question whether they were any wiser than me and how we should have written that up and that, other than just shake hands over the deal, you know? I'm asking that we be given permission to get, keep this easement going, it's worked fine over the years, we were more than happy to, the upkeep and that too, and maybe there's some really nice agreement that can be extended, so we can continue there. We have four, five big doors on that end that we have to access with semis, that's our problem, and right now, we can't do that. Sirs, do you have any questions whatsoever from me? I would be glad to answer them.
So Jerry, you're saying that agreement was just a gentleman's handshake, there was no formal document to sign?
Actually, I don't, I think you know I don't here.
There was no document you signed?
Right, no, uh-uh. Well, yes, there was, they made a bill of, yeah, yeah, we, we had to pay for the building, of course, and then we got a deed and all that, and we did get the deed out and that, I believe, one of the city people here asked about that, and yes, we have our deed and all that stuff, and that.
But there was no document for the easement?
No, uh-uh, no, no, no.
Counsel, have any questions?
That I know of. Can I leave these here, so you folks can share them? Or should I send them, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know our city attorney is here, Lindsay Forsgren. Lindsay, do you want to comment, please?
I don't have any comments for you, I guess I'm just here in case you guys have any questions about the information Jerry's provided.
So where does the city enter into this if there is no documentation?
I, based on what I reviewed, I don't think the city has any part in this, any boundary line disputes, any easement disputes are between property owners. I don't, I don't see anything that the city needs to be doing here.
Any questions from the council, the city attorney?
No question, but perhaps a statement. It's no secret in the city that, back in the day, the handshake agreement was the signed document. I say that because I myself experienced almost the same problem. It was remedied, again, with no documentation, so nobody had to admit guilt. So I, do I believe Jerry? The answer, or the remedy to the problem that they're having up there? I don't know, and maybe she's right, it's between landowners, but if it is between landowners, I would say the city then should stay 100% away from it.
That is correct. If I understand correct, correctly, Mr. Henry's trying to say that the, the lot that was deeded to, is it Torres Rebar, is now interfering with this easement he thought he had. There is no easement on record, so the city could not have known that it was being used that way, and the city now has a contract with Torres Rebar that lasts for 18 months, so you're not really in a position to do anything. But again, I don't think the city should be doing anything either.
But would your advice be, should one of the, that new lot come back, because there isn't a structure there yet, whether or not there is or isn't in 18 months is yet to be seen? If the city should get that back, would it be your recommendation or advice then that the city, if they sell it to the next person, that they must have it surveyed or have some type of an agreement with the adjoining property holders?
I don't think a survey has anything to do with it, I don't think agreements with the adjoining property owner says anything to do with it. I think that if that land ends up coming back to the city per the contract, then that's Mr. Henry's time to come forward and say, I need that land, because I was previously using it, I'd like to continue using it. So I think it's really something you just have to deal with at the time, when and if it comes back to the city.
When are we entering that contract with Mr. Torres?
Was August, or it got recorded on, I think it was August 16th, I believe. Yes, August 16th, so he has until February 16th for substantial completion of a building, so, otherwise, it would come back to the city.
Okay. Any other council members?
You know, it's really unfortunate, I mean, I thought the boundary was on the other side of the driveway, but, you know, if that's correct, it's right along his loading dock. It's, it's really a bad deal.
I will say that if there is any agreement that's reached between the landowners, I think the city does need to be a party to that agreement because of the nature of the contract. I think the city's going to have to sign off on any agreed upon easement, if there is one, because of the nature of the contract. I mean, it specifically states in there that any financing has to be approved through you guys, I, I would view this as a material change, and so I think that would need to be added and agreed upon.
But at this time, you see that we should take no action?
Correct, it's really on the property owners at this point. And though there's a clause that it comes back to the city, if the contract's not fulfilled, the city does not technically own it at this time.
We'll cross that bridge if we ever come to it. Counsel, I think to say otherwise, we'll just move on. Okay, thank you, Kylie.
Thank you.
Lance, is Kate here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. See her come in. Move on to item number 20, Park Board, we have Kate Woolover Martinez.
Hi, everybody. Here, representing the Pelican Rapids Park Board for two different things, and I just got updated on one as Lindsay was leaving. The first is the Pelican Rapids Park Board, it would like to move forward in applying for a grant that we found. Now, I also am kind of wearing two hats, because as we looked more into the grant, we found out the Pelican Rapids Park Board was not eligible, but the Pelican Rapids United Soccer Association is eligible, which I'm also a part of, and so what I'd like to ask for approval is to, for myself to apply for the grant as a member of the Pelican Rapids United Soccer Association Board Member, and because we're the nonprofit, because of our, where we're at with our committee, we would need the city to be the physical host of, of that grant, should we receive the funds for it. And the funding would be to get a new swing set at Thompson Park, is what we're trying to get, and additionally, two new soccer goals at Thompson, Thompson Park, because Thompson Park right now doesn't have a swing set, and we see that as a necessity to have, because the Northwest Playground has one, E.L. Peterson Park has one, and it's just used so heavily at Thompson, the playground, and so we just see that as a missing component in the playground. Additionally, the soccer goals at Thompson Park are very rough, they've been welded many times, we've zip tied them, duct taped, and they're almost like a danger at this point, and so we were excited to find this grant that would cover everything, should we get it, plus, we've received donations, and so with the donations and this grant, then it would be at no cost to the city. So I am here to ask that I can move forward, and, actually, I'm not as the park board asking this, I'm asking as the PRUSA member, as a soccer member, to move forward with applying for it, as the Pelican Rapids City would be the physical host, should we receive funds for it?
Kate, do you have a amount of that grant?
Yeah, it's 25, a little over $25,000 would be the total, and so the park board has gathered up the, the amount needed, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the, the quotes or the, yeah, sorry, and so with all, that would also include, like, the, the added border, that would include the new mulch flooring, which is ADA compliant for the playground, that, just everything would be included in that, so it would be, no, Brian has approved it, he's not here tonight, but, and the city has agreed to, should we get that, they would install the, the playground for us, or, I'm sorry, the swing set for us.
Okay. Lance, do you have any comments about us being the physical agent for that? No problem?
Be a problem, I mean.
We're able to, if they're not a, since it's the soccer organization rather than.
You've looked into, we have to be, it just doesn't work for the soccer association to be.
Correct, yeah, we're not eligible, and so I did actually make it to the second round of this, it's, I haven't started the grant yet, but you're supposed to submit a letter of inquiry, and we actually made it past that point, which a lot of people didn't, so I was like, oh, okay, no, we got to take this serious, and come and see if I can start applying for the grant now, is what it would be.
I mean, she doesn't need our permission to apply for the grant, since it's not a city organization that's applying for the grant, but since it's not a city organization applying for the grant, are we able, as the city, to have the, I mean?
She just wants to be sure that we, we would be willing to be the fiscal host of that grant if she gets it.
Is my question.
Yes, all the paperwork has been sent in, and I had the phone interview with the people already, and so the city has approved.
We're legally able to do that?
Yes.
That's all we need.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion second. Comments? Questions? Questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried.
The second part, the second reason I'm here tonight is, a little over a year ago, the park board came with the idea to name, so we worked hard to get the Northwest Playground, we were excited about that, and then we had discussed the idea of giving it a name, because right now, it's been called the Northwest Playground, and so before I went on maternity leave, we came and asked if we could come up with a name for that, using the elementary students as the, the main people in this, so I was just going to hand this out quick, and then I'll kind of go over the, the details of it all. So I realize this project has taken a long time, because then I left for maternity leave, and now have gotten back, and it's been this really fun project, so each class, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, and sixth grade, all the students there looked at different images of the park in the northwest quadrant of town, the newest park in town, and I explained to them right now, it's called the Northwest Park, that, that's just what, like, people just refer to it as, but it's not, it hasn't been named. So then, all third to sixth grade students brainstormed different names that the park could be. We just, we had a few lessons on ways, what's appropriate, what would not be appropriate for a name. 204 park names were originally submitted from students grade three through six. I was the one who removed any inappropriate names, just to get them out of there. There, I will say, on behalf of our students, there was nothing, like, bad written, but inappropriate, as in, there was lots of, like, Mason's Park, like, they wanted to name it after themselves, and then another one was, like, the most awesome park in the world, I explained, it's just too long, things like, but there was no, like, bad words or anything like that. And so then, once those were, then we had another vote amongst all third through sixth grade students at Viking Elementary, and then it got it down to the top 40 names, and then from there, we had another vote, and we got it down to the top 11 names. So I just wanted to read those top 11 names, it's just been a fun project we've worked on throughout the year, the top 11 names, and the reason, I'll go over the reason why it's 11 and not 10. So Clover Park, Unity Park, Discovery Park, Pelican Pete Park, Monarch Park, Our Park, Everyone's Park, Jubilee Park, Milkweed Park, Rose Park, and the Peoples Park. These were the top 11 names, and the, next to the, the name is the students who came up with that name. The reason it is 11 names and not 10 is because Pelican Pete Park came up, you can see the names there, I was the one who swayed the students kind of away from that one, I was the one who was a little bit concerned that people would think E.L. Peterson Park was Pelican's Pete's Park, because Pelican Pete is right there, but I said I would leave it in, anyways, regardless, it didn't make the top three. So anyways, then there was a final vote amongst all the students, and third place was Discovery Park, second place was Monarch Park, and the first place, that won by 26 votes, is Unity Park. The pictures there, you can kind of see just the kids at school, kind of the process that we did it. I was just going to say, on the second place, with Monarch Park, the students who came up with that name, they wanted to share, me to share with you guys, the reason they chose Monarch Park was because it's a park nature, and it's orange and black, they thought the color combination was kind of cool. But in the end, anyways, Unity Park won, and so I'm here tonight to ask that, on behalf of the students at Viking Elementary, if we could name Northwest Quadrant, or the new park in the northwest quadrant, Unity Park, and that was officially named by Bryce Hansen and Ian Syrek, is who came up with that name.
This has gone through the park board, correct?
Yes, it's been through the park board many times, each step of the way, or I'm sure you guys saw that in our notes, each step of the way, we had, we shared it out and talked about it, and it's been a long, long haul with the kids, it was fun.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried.
Awesome, thanks, you guys, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Kate, can I ask?
Yeah.
A question. Pool staffing, are you okay with?
You know, I'm not, I, that would be a Brian thing, I don't know. I know three of my varsity soccer players are applying for it, but I don't know.
Oh, really?
Yeah, but I don't know, like, I know, like, fundraising things, but I don't know for pool things.
I was just reading a minute, and I thought you were involved.
I, I was the one who sent it, just to the girls soccer team, and we got three people that want to do it, so, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know, other than that.
Thanks, Kate. Let's go down to item number, or, number 12, EDA update. EDA Director Jordan Grossman's here, and she has one, two, three, four, five, seven different bullet points, and I believe she needs, like, six motions.
We're going to go quick, though.
So you take it away, and when you want a motion, you ask for it.
All right, good evening, council, here with your monthly EDA update and motions. We can start with our bylaws. Lance has the specific date of when you last had bylaws implemented for the EDA, it was a long time ago, so I worked with other CEDA communities, we pulled together a basic form of bylaws, and looking for a motion to approve these, so we have them implemented, and we will be a completely restructured and revitalized EDA.
Move to approve the bylaws. Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion.
What are the big changes?
Um, there's just more than, the articles were really the only thing there in the beginning, Article One, we added articles that discuss each officer's duty on the board, and then if there is an opening on the EDA board, how would that be handled? Nothing as far as authority over purchases, that will all still come to city council.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Next is. Next is Historic City Hall update, proposal was in our packet.
As you know, we have had a request for proposals period on Historic City Hall downtown, the main floor. I collected proposals for a period of a little over thirty days, received a few proposals back, I met with quite a few people down at Historic City Hall. Through the process, all proposals, besides a few, really were not feasible for the building and what's needed for it. It was a great experience getting to meet with people who have vested interest in opening a business downtown. So definitely a takeaway list of businesses to connect with in the future. In your packet, you should see a proposal called Brew Haven. This is the proposal the EDA board is moving forward with, and the only proposal that made it to the EDA board, everything else was deemed not feasible through conversation and interviews with myself. I'm assuming you've had an opportunity to read the proposal. If you have any questions, I can comment on them. At the end of the proposal, there's a document that just talks about tentative, tentative lease terms, I don't have a lease for you to look at yet, but terms I'd like for you to vote on this evening if they are something you want to move forward with. So tentative terms would be a five-year lease minimum, first year free rent, like a business incubator model building that we've discussed before, and first year free utilities, as it's hard to assess how the, how much the utilities are gonna cost, since the building has not been up and running in the past few years. With that, just that the tenant would have the first opportunity to renew a lease and/or purchase the building, if that's something you would ever want to do in the future. I just have some wording in there for you to view. I also put, this wasn't in your packet, it was just placed at your seat this evening, a blueprint of the layout of the building. I labeled north for you, so hopefully that helps. This is all probably up for a little bit of change, but it gives you a rough idea of what the building would look like. I've met with city maintenance, Brian, quite a few times down there, a few businesses in town who have some construction expertise, have donated some time to give some estimates on numbers, as well as the, Teresa, who submitted the proposal, has some extensive work and business planning with West Central Small Business Development Center, and has a one-on-one consultant to help her through this process, which is awesome, and something the city donated towards. And I think the last thing on that is, the city has allocated $24,000 to that building for staffing, because that's what was done in the past. I would like to propose the idea of putting that money towards building improvements as a landlord. I know that some money needs to be allocated towards the streets project and the utility lines being updated, but anything that's leftover, I think roughly $20,000, should go towards building improvements to have the building to code, to have a coffee shop in it. I'm sure you have questions, maybe you don't, this is a recommendation from the EDA board.
So we already have the money budgeted for the city hall, as far as that $24,000?
Yep, that was that Otter Tail Lakes Country contract, yep.
But that's already in the budget, so we're not doing anything extra.
Yep.
And then moving forward, that wouldn't be an expense, anything you'd have to budget for.
Any other questions? See, Teresa's here with us this evening. Teresa, do you have any comments?
Say yes.
Now's your chance.
[laughing]
If not, that's fine also.
Counsel? Who, so with the building improvements, I mean, how do we, who determines building improvements, I mean, what we need for building improvements?
I have, I don't have any problem taking on ownership of that task. I think letting Teresa work with her consultant to figure out what's needed as far as food-grade flooring, and her bistro area, other flooring that's gonna need to be replaced, counters, sinks, et cetera. I think that all can be done on her end with a consultant and outside agencies, as far as what the city would be paying for, is like water extension, food-grade flooring, things to increase the value of the building, in case there's ever anything in the future. And invoices could be submitted directly to the city, so we're not writing out a check to a specific person.
Jordan, the bathrooms look good, I was in the building, I looked it over, they're adequate, aren't they?
Yes, and they are already ADA accessible, so.
That's a plus.
It's great. The only other thing would be that there's, want to use the upstairs as a supply, storage area, and my hope would be that there is conversation with the chamber, there already is existing conversation about them vacating the upstairs, but we do have a contract in place. So that's something that I can continue to work with them on, as far as if they want to come forward and terminate their contract, or if that's something the city should do. But the use of the upstairs would also be a big plus.
What's your contract, though?
The chambers? It's just an ongoing one. I mean, if we were, we want to get out of it, it would be a thirty-day notice on either end, if they want to get out, they'd give us notice thirty days.
So a thirty-day window, too, for that contract, too.
Jordan, if we're, if we were to go ahead to make a motion, what would you like the motion to say? Putting you on the spot.
Well, so what's the timeframe? I mean, is this gonna be like up and running by July? I mean, what's the...
No.
So what's the...
No, there's licensing that needs to take place with the Department of Health and multiple other seller licenses that will be needed as well. That's all based on the timeframe and staffing at those state-level agencies. Approving it now would allow Teresa the comfort to get started, and I imagine maybe a soft launch late summer, early fall. But your approval tonight would, would allow her lending sources, outside lending sources, she's taking on some personal lending for this project as well to move forward.
Is there a basement?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that usable, or what?
Not, not really.
There's a fan going in the basement pretty frequently.
I mean, it's an old musty basement, but, I mean, it could be used for some type of storage, but...
We'd have to install some, some new shelving, probably, food-grade storage, dry storage would be needed down there.
Wasn't there a jail down there?
That was upstairs.
There was a jail bench down there we stored, once we moved the upstairs to police department.
Yeah, okay.
I think that resides in Historic City Hall.
What's the council's wishes?
I'll move we approve this money for water and sewer hookup changes and the rest of it for building improvements.
Motion second, discussion.
Does that also include the going forward with this proposal?
So what is the actual motion that you're approving?
Motion to move forward with the Brew Haven business proposal and the $20,000 building improvement, city investment.
Not to exceed the amount we've budgeted.
Okay with you?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Okay, next we have MWC Advertising Proposal, which was in your packet.
Yep, in your packet. Previously, we were gonna do a digital campaign, advertising campaign with Beck News, they weren't able to get enough sponsorships from our business, businesses in town to move forward. So MWC Advertising reached out to me and came up with a few different advertising campaigns for the city over road construction period. The EDA does have some dollars that we're gonna go towards a different campaign. This was in your packet, if you haven't had an opportunity to review it, we can discuss it. But it would be a $5,100 bill for a summer advertising campaign on prominent Fargo stations, Fargo Moorhead stations that do broadcast in the area, and a few live, I don't know, Kevin, what do you want to call it?
Live, live interviews, live shows on downtown?
Yep, downtown during our Friendship Festival, and then I've been working on some taglines to be brought to you by the city of Pelican Rapids. And then also, I would advocate for half of the funding of this to come out of liquor store funds, and we could broadcast liquor store sales as well.
I'll also make the comment that the misinformation about this product or project is already out there. Because I've had people from Detroit Lakes ask me, well, I've heard that Pelican is completely shut down, all your restaurants are shut down, liquor stores closed, so that is already out there, and we're two weeks into this. So if we go a lot longer than that...
Going into summer.
It's gonna get ugly. So I think any advertising that we can do, and every advertising that we can do, needs to be hit hard, hit fast, and, because it's already, I mean, people are already, Pelican is closed.
Is that leading up to a motion?
Yeah. Absolutely. Let's pay for it, pay for it all.
So you approve the...
I don't know that we have a choice to not.
Yeah, okay. Is there, is there a second?
A second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Can you specify where the funds are coming from, though?
Half the funds will come from liquor store, the half the funds will come from EDA funding right now, with pending EDC chip in also.
Yep.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Next is Business Mini Grant Program, which is in the packet.
Since my time in Pelican Rapids, I've been meeting with the EDC, a private economic development group similar to the EDA. They are an advisory board to component funds at West Central Initiative Foundation, and the board has been rather stagnant the last ten years. We did some board member changes, I got Lance to join, and the group is making some movement. So the group would like to have a Business Mini Grant application available to businesses in Pelican Rapids this summer. Essentially, the funds would be EDC funds, the EDC would vote on any applications that were brought forward, and then forward that vote on to West Central Initiative, and West Central Initiative would write a grant check to the EDA to disperse. It's just the city really is gonna act like, the EDA is gonna act like an intermediary for funds, that's just the way it has to work. But it's all EDC funds, and it will be great advertising for the EDA and the EDC who needs it, because they have a lot of great programs for businesses in town.
So there's no net cost really to the city of their...
No, no, just that will be the...
EDC get their money.
They were donations to component funds at West Central Initiative. They are looking at ways to start fundraising again, so they should be more prominent and prevalent in town in the next few months, I hope.
What's the council's wishes?
I move to approve.
A second.
How's that approval?
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Next one is Find Your Path Payment Request.
Find Your Pelican Rapids, Find Your Path is the local marketing group that was created. Originally, they came and asked the EDA for a $5,000 pledge for seed money to get their marketing resources started in town for road construction. We worded it that we would match what the EDC would offer. The EDC is in the process of offering a grant up to $5,000. But Find Your Path has, is, the financial responsibility has been on their shoulders so far, and they haven't received any seed money. So this would be a motion to go ahead and disperse our $5,000 pledge to the Find Your Path group, EDA funds.
I'll move we permit EDA to disperse these funds.
A second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Next one, CEDA Annual Meeting, that's just an FYI, Jordan.
Just an FYI. The CEDA, the CEDA Annual Meeting is May fifteenth from ten to one in Blue Earth, Minnesota. If anybody wants to have a trek that way, feel free, you're all more than welcome, just an invite to you, that, that's when we have community members, city council members come to our annual meeting and hear about what we're doing in all of our communities. I did not expect anybody from Pelican Rapids to come, I just wanted to make sure you knew about it, and you're more than welcome.
Any questions regarding that?
What time is it?
Ten to one.
I must check out.
Okay, next bullet point, Minnesota Housing Partnership, MOU.
The EDA is in the process of updating the city's housing study, the last one was done in 2015. We were luck, lucky to work with Otter Tail County CDA and received a $5,000 financial assistance grant to help lower the cost of that. In addition, I applied to a technical assistance grant from Minnesota Housing Partnership, and this grant, all in all, is there, they have their feet on the ground in the community, taking a lot of the community survey work off of my shoulders, being here three days a week. Agents from their agency will come into town and find community leaders and work with them to make sure whatever surveys we're putting out for our housing study is understandable from all of the diverse population of Pelican Rapids, whether that be focus groups or translating documents. They have financial assistance funds to pay anybody who can help them within Pelican Rapids, so I imagine we'll utilize some nonprofits that already exist, like Community and Life Services and the Multicultural Committee. After that, Minnesota Housing Partnership has financial assistance for the EDA when we're looking at housing, pre-development planning after our housing study, so we can do something after the study's done. And this is just an agreement or an understanding, it's very vague, so it can be changed as we move forward, as housing needs happen, but this is the start of a great relationship with an agency who, who's already involved with our housing study, so.
Questions from the council?
I move to approve it.
Yeah.
I move to approve the MOU from the Minnesota Housing Partnership.
Sorry.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Anything else, Jordan?
Everything that's in Historic City Hall right now, there's a lot of things inside of Historic City Hall. If you have any preference on where those items might go, if you want to email me or call me and let me know if you want to talk about it now, we can. Otherwise, I've talked to Lance and some other members in the community, I think that a lot of it can be moved into this room. We're not gonna overcrowd it, but there is a lot of pertinent history in, that's up on the walls in there, that these walls are bare, and I think it could look nice, and the large table that's in there could fit in here.
Large table has been requested by the library to use down there.
Wonderful, and I can...
Your office, don't you?
Yeah.
Has that, has that sturgeon been relocated yet?
No, Lance's office.
I could possibly go to the library, too.
Talk to the pool hall.
Okay.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, wonderful. So if you have any suggestions, or if you have any preference, let me know, otherwise I'll just continue to work on getting things out of there, so.
Okay.
All right. Have a good night.
I'm not helping with it.
Let's bounce down to item number nine, Fire Department, Fire Chief Chad Hanson's been waiting patiently, as he's on twenty-four-hour call. He's gonna... been waiting patiently as he's on 24-hour call. He's going to talk to us regarding a new trailer. Chief?
So, we are asking to borrow up to $5,000 to buy a new trailer down at the fire hall. With that, we would also be asking for permission to sell the old trailer. It's kind of a change of money. We would borrow the $5,000, and within two months, we would turn around and give it back to you. Relief Association is willing to pay for it, plus the sale of the old trailer. So once we sell the old trailer, we'll match whatever money needs to be matched for the new trailer. If that makes sense.
Why do you have to sell the old trailer? I mean, what's the...
It's big, and we don't, it's a car trailer hauling around aside by side. So it's six feet longer than we need it to be. It's harder to make turns driving into places. So it's just, this newer trailer has a full back ramp on it. This other trailer has just two single ramps. Use-wise, it's just not great. So, cost to the city would be none. Like I said, it's all coming from the Relief Association. So, and in the end, I guess the city gets to own the new trailer.
Is the new one aluminum?
No, it'll be steel. Our old, two trailers before used to be aluminum. What happens is driving it through the fields, it cracks the welds. So it just doesn't hold up. So, we drive through cornfields and everything else, I guess.
Council?
I'll make a motion that the fire department sell the old trailer. Move forward with the replacement.
Second. Motion second. Discussion.
We have the $5,000 from where?
Just to be in the general fund. Danielle and Chad kind of discussed it, and she's fine with it, so.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All is the same. Motion carried. Anything else, chief?
I do have one other small thing. The fire department would recommend hire Lucas Albright under the fire department. Lucas Albright. Chief here was doing a background check. Did it ever come back?
Yes, cleared.
It's cleared.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's right.
You have to do background checks on...
They can't have a felony, and they have to have a driver's license.
I move to approve.
Motion second. Discussion. Discussion. What does that bring your staff up to?
22.
What's full?
24 is full.
24, okay. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All is the same. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Now, let's jump up to item number seven, West Central Initiative. We have Rick Shara here, and I believe, did the committee...
Kurt had to go.
Kurt had to. He was, Kurt Mortenson was here early. He had another meeting.
Kurt is, Kurt Mortenson's on our EDD Board, Economic Development Board. So, I just want to go through, thank you for having us here. We come once a year and kind of update you on some things we're doing, and maybe it's fun to listen to the things that are going on in the community. It was fun. Jerry had donated that perk law that years ago, and you know, the love for the community is just, you can just tell that. And Jordan doing all this work and stuff. It was just kind of neat to be flying the wall and listening to that stuff. And that's kind of what we're doing. At West Central Initiative, I was here probably a couple of years ago, but for those who are new, it was founded during the 1980s under the farm crisis and by the McKnight Foundation, which is three M's, so Scotch tape, posted notes, the company Minnesota Mining and Manufacturing. They want to give money out to the rural areas, said, "We need money," like this Twin Cities was getting, and they developed, they created, excuse me, the Initiative Foundation, six of them in the greater Minnesota. Now, this little packet, I'm going to go through the packets here, but this little booklet, if you don't look at much else, this is kind of real quick, fun read. And the first page kind of shows you the Initiative Foundations on the bottom in the blue. You can see West Central there. And the top are the economic development organizations in the state. And the economic development organizations are recognized by the feds, and the state, and a lot of money gets funneled through the economic development organizations for city and county infrastructure type of projects and planning projects and things like that. And we're the only one that wears both those hats. As you can see, we're both Initiative Foundation and Development Organization. And so, it's kind of fun to see how we came to wear that hat as West Central Initiative. On the right, too, I'll start actually on the left. We have our annual report, Ripples of Good, and this just came out, it was just printed here a few weeks, a couple of weeks ago. And you can take that home, and there's stories about the goods, the things, the good things we're doing in our communities. And I think I can safely say there's a lot of things, activity here in Pelican Rapids that we're involved with, and many, many things. On the right again, 17 rooms. This is an event in Morris on June 12th. So it's a, if you want to sign up for it, you can find this on our website, wcif.org. And what this is, is actually kind of to meet with other people from the region, and we're actually getting some national attention and statewide to come and in one day, kind of come up with some activities that can help our communities thrive in certain segments. So you don't look at the whole city, you look, well, you look at the whole city, but just in segments. So cities have things, they need clean water, and you want good economic development, and you want good schools and clean air, life bowl of water. There's different segments broken down into 17 areas, and that's what this room, this is about. And I encourage, it'd be nice to have a couple of Pelican Rapids representatives at this one-day event where you'll get into a room and kind of hammer out a couple of, two or three quick action items. This has been done in Hawaii and Florida, I think, are the only two places in the U.S. that this has been done. So we're going to give it a try. And behind that is a starter ripple. We are actually doing some fundraising to help with our work. You know, we do a lot of work in early childhood. We do some climate action programming and ripple grants. So a lot of our grants, we have a grant that closes tonight, I guess, the, some of our grants that are out. And then we have one called Rural Leadership, and did I leave, I must not have gotten that in this one, but we have, we have identified a stress on our communities is finding people to step up and lead in their community. Now, this could be being, heading, working with nonprofits. It could be service clubs, but we're kind of focusing more on elected office. So there are, in our nine counties, there are like 430 townships that have township boards, there's city councils, there are soil and water districts, library boards, school boards, and some of our counties, for instance, Traverse, I think one in seven people have to step up and serve to an elected office in that county. So some of this research came around. We looked at that and said, "Well, what can we do about it?" And part of it is in a, is to teach people why, why it's important for citizens to step up and be part of the community, why it's important. You don't want headlines like Millerville had a couple of, a couple of elections ago, no one got elected mayor in Millerville. So what does that mean? And so, you've got a great mayor here, you know, Brett there, you mentioned I should say something how great you are, so there's that. Oh, I just kidding. People know me, know I kid a lot, so. But I really appreciate it. You do a good job, so. We have fun. And then finally in the back here is our loan programs, and we do small business loans, as you may know. We're also working on some democracy, well, that other, that training is of the democracy thing, but we're doing some rural belonging work as well. And we're also involved here at the Bridge Center, out the Congressional Church and some of that. And we got people involved in that and actually bringing some funding into that as well through different channels. And so, and what I always like to try to end with, I'll see if you have any questions, but if you're interested, we network a lot and we make connections. I always say that's one thing we do a lot of, is making connections in communities and between communities. And on our website, there's a subscribe button, wcif.org, and I always say, if you just subscribe to some of those newsletters about once a month or once every two months, we collect a lot of the information that comes through our organization from state, national, funders, big nonprofits like McKnight or some of those. And we gather what's happening and maybe some opportunities. So we put those opportunities, it could be workshops, but a lot of times it's grants or opportunities for communities and nonprofits to better themselves, may find something that could match an issue you're having. So I think that, I'm probably missing a few things, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them. Otherwise, I appreciate the time.
Any questions for Rick?
I can't give a fishing report because the season's not open. I mean, that would probably be another.
Thank you for your West Central Initiative report, Rick.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight, Pelican Fest. Lana Grifstrude, I believe, is here. Yes?
Hi, Lana Grifstrude, Pelican Fest. We're kind of coming down to the, finalizing the schedules of everything, and I just want to get your guys' approval on two different things. One, the parade route. Obviously, with the construction, we're going to have to do things a little bit different this year. So what we've proposed, I think Lance has been in contact with us, and this is a proposed route to start at the elementary school and then leave heading east to Second Street, and then go down to First Avenue and then circle back. So it's avoiding the detour route. It's avoiding the main street. It's getting a good chunk of the blocks on the road. Oh, there we go. Is it highlighted on there?
I can kind of see it's the arrows there that...
Yeah, like the elementary school. So we're going to kind of take this new road down there and then come back. I don't know if there's anything special we have to do as far as blocking traffic off on those roads or from parking.
Chief, do you have any comments on that, or have you been able to scope it out yet?
I'm not 100% certain of what the practice has been in the past. That's going to have to all be no parking. I don't know how you would have that without that whole...
Right.
...parking. I assume Public Works has...
Yes, they have some barricades and signage.
Coordinated that in the past. My only concern is, is do you believe everybody will be on the parade route at the same time? All of your units be able to be on the parade route at the same time?
I think so. I don't foresee that being a problem.
Okay, perfect. I was concerned about units still leaving while some are coming back.
Right, right.
Kind of a choke point there, so. But that's unavoidable.
Right.
I'm not complaining about it. I'm saying it's something that we have to be mindful of. Kind of Lance and I kind of talked, it might very well be instructions for those front units, which are usually your first responder type units, to make sure they understand how their flow needs to be at the end of their...
Right. Like zipper merge at the end or something to get people back, but...
Or fall out of town and not even come back to the school. They don't need a stage.
Right.
I mean, they're going back to where they're home.
Exactly. Yep, unless they're unloading a trailer.
Sneak out of town.
Exactly. We'll kind of keep that front of mind, too, when we kind of arrange the order of things, if there is an arrangement of order. So, questions from council?
Any questions, council?
And then the second item is...
You're looking for an approval on this.
I suppose. Do you want to approve both things at once, or just...
What's your other one?
This year, we are going to be running shuttles from both the north end of town and the south end of town to alleviate the parking congestion that could happen. I'm looking for permission to use the city hall parking lot for the north bus. Gather people here, drop them off downtown, 9 to 2, I think, that day, Saturday, the 13th. Rotary is covering the cost of the buses and drivers. The south one will be at the Chauncey Martin lot.
Questions, council? What are you going to use for shuttles?
School bus. Christiansen's being very generous on that as well.
I'll move we approve the parade route and the shuttles from city hall parking lot.
Motion second. Discussion.
Having been in the parade in the past, first, they do kind of do a staging. They used to do a staging up here. Maybe you would think about...
Trinity or up here.
Well, they would, for the...
Staging is happening at the elementary.
Right, but I'm not sure that that lot would necessarily be big enough. If you maybe move the, move the staging to the Chauncey Martin field, you'd have more space for staging of floats and stuff, and then you'd have to...
You'd just have to hop on 59 for that little bit to get there. Yeah.
Just a, something to look at.
Yeah. That could be an overflow, I guess.
Because I know when, you know, when they've done it up here, they've got them all the way down Fifth and in the parking lot and along Second.
Right.
So, I mean, looking at the elementary school parking lot there would be, I think would be pretty tight when you start, you know, depending on what people bring.
Right.
You always get a couple of guys that...
Okay, we'll keep that.
Eske Shriners driving around in little cars.
Might be their last...
So, just, you know, maybe consider that or talk about that in a meeting.
Okay, I'll make note of that.
There would, that would, it'd require some type of traffic control to be done on 59.
We'd have to get mint out of approval.
For sure.
You have to do the permit at that point.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, if we could, but like Kevin said, it's probably too compact in just the, so it might be something to get looking into sooner rather than later, as far as not only interrupting the detour route, but interrupting US 50.
Well, the elementary school, there's two parking lots.
Right. Yeah.
There's one on the east side also.
Right.
But that isn't too big either.
No, it's very small.
It'll be cozy. So, okay. I'll make sure to talk to Emma about that DOT.
Do you anticipate a smaller?
Probably smaller than average parade. Yeah. We just don't want to drop it completely.
How soon, how late does it get before you have parade entries like nailed down?
To my understanding, there aren't really entries. It's a show up the day of...
That's bad. Then I would apply for sure for the...
Be cognizant of the situation before you bring your, yeah.
I would have all my ducks in a row before all of a sudden 400 floats show up. Guess what?
We can add that on our messaging and, yeah. Okay.
Just because it does get dicey with, do you apply for that, Todd?
I have in other communities.
I believe it's, I think law enforcement has to be the one. I'm not sure.
You don't have to, but they have to sign off on it.
Yeah.
Probably easier you do. Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All is the same. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lana. Item number 10, Apex Engineering, Pinewood Estates Development. We have Mr. Bob Schliemann here from Apex.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council and staff. Yeah, I just wanted to talk this evening about the Pinewood Estates Development Project, as we've discussed in the past. I do have a conceptual drawing that I've included in my packet, which kind of shows the area. Please realize this is a project that's basically being, was brought up and is being done by Otter Tail County, basically. There's an agreement between Otter Tail County and the city of Pelican Rapids. So this is the old Otter Tail County trucks, truck station site. truck station site. As you can see, we've got curb and gutter, storm sewer, sewer water, new street. The goal is to have, I believe it's four or five new lots, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, actually nine new lots, the way it looks. So, we did receive bids, construction bids for this on, it was April 17th. There was different things that they could provide a bid on. So we had basically a base bid option number one, which was to install shallow sanitary sewer from down here on Third up to this manhole. So base bid option number one, this would be shallower sanitary sewer, only deep enough or a depth that's required to serve this development up here. We had option number two, which would have this section of sanitary sewer deeper. So in the future, we could hopefully serve most of Fifth. So that was base bid option number two. And then we had an additive alternate number one, which, which was to complete some site grading at this site. Some of you that are, for those of you that are familiar with the site, it drops off grade wise pretty drastically once you get west of Third Street Northeast. So the site grading, what that would entail is the contractor bringing in fill to fill the site. So it could obviously be constructed and have a smooth transition for the new street onto Third Street Northeast. So, we got six bids, which was pretty good, actually more than what we anticipated. The low bid was submitted. And I'm assuming, you know, I have information in here for base bid option number one, or this is actually for base bid option number two, the total that you see here. So we've got, it's base bid option number two plus the additive alternate. So basically, it's the most expensive possible construction combination that we had as far as the bids that we received. Landwear Construction provided the low construction bid. So at this point, basically, if the city wishes to construct the deeper sanitary sewer, your portion of the project cost would be $44,000. And again, the reason that we're going to do that is hopefully to extend it in the future to Fifth and be able to serve Fifth with gravity sewer. If you say we're not interested in installing the deeper sanitary sewer right now for that purpose, then the project cost would be basically 749 or 739, or 739,000. And that would be completely Otter Tail County's responsibility. Any questions on that? Did I make that as clear as mud?
You did a good job.
Okay. So, that's basically a summary of the construct, or that's the overall project budget. So that includes not only construction, it also includes professional services. And we threw a contingency factor on top of that as well. So, so I guess this evening, what we'd be looking for is if the city wishes to move forward with construction. And we've provided this information to Amy at Otter Tail County. She's aware of it. She indicated that they would like to move forward. I don't know, Lance, if you've heard anything different or anything in addition?
She is on Zoom, too, if you have any questions for her. So.
Okay. Hey, Amy.
Any questions, Amy? Comments?
No, I don't. We just haven't had an official board meeting yet. So we'll be reviewing with our full board here in a couple weeks as well.
So I guess the question then, Amy, is, is are you comfortable with the city moving ahead this evening in awarding a construction contract? Or would you like us to hold off on that?
No, no, we're comfortable moving ahead.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So again, this, this, I guess, right now, the decision would be, knowing that the county wants to move ahead with their portion, their portion is 739,000. Does the city wish to expand the additional 44,000 to increase the depth of that sanitary sewer? Again, looking to the future to serve Fifth, Fifth Avenue. So.
Can the city afford it?
No, we've heard, Lance?
Well, I was talking with Danielle and she's fairly comfortable. We could take it out of general fund this year and be all right.
It makes sense to do that looking into the future.
Yeah. In the future, Fifth wanted it, we'd have to put in a pump station, lift station, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars extra.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars to put in a lift station up there. And it's, that's just the initial capital cost, obviously, to ongoing operation and maintenance costs. You'd have them as well. And I'm, I'm fairly certain Brian would probably rather not have to operate and maintain another lift station. So.
Would you not take a portion out of sewer and water funds rather than general fund?
Sewer and water funds are tapped out. I mean, there's nothing extra in either of them right now. There, there might be a line item here and there that would be, but the sewer fund especially is not in good shape with that.
I have, I guess I have a hard time, after, you know, thinking about the budget that we passed, I have a hard time believing we have $44,000 laying around and they're ready to just throw in a project.
Well, remember when we talked about all that, I mean, you guys approved that extra, what was it, 75,000?
Yeah, from the contingency money.
And that other, so...
There's still some money left in that.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the likelihood that we'll be looking for Fifth to be serviced?
I mean, in the near future, that likelihood is not very good at all. But who knows, in 20 years, there could be all new owners up there and they're all wanting water sewer and, Amy, I, we don't know. I mean...
Didn't, didn't Otter Tail County, didn't they pass some kind of requirements or, I don't know, something for their, for the septic, the, if septic's fail, they almost...
I think that was when they stubbed out, out here, when it was going to be offered, that the construction that they could get services brought up, 108.
But I thought, didn't they do some, didn't they, didn't do something with the, with the septic policy that if they're, if...
If it fails, they have to hook the city.
Septic tanks are failed, failing, that they were, they had to go with the city.
Well, if it's available. I mean, we don't have it available up there.
That's our policy, too, at this point.
Right.
If it's available.
We, Steve.
With the county picking up most of this money, I don't see why we wouldn't want, take advantage of this.
Be prepared for the future.
Big pro act.
To prepare for it. But I mean, how, how many times have we brought, has it been brought to council to, to do that down Fifth Avenue and it's...
And we brought it...
That's a guaranteed house packer when we bring that up because every resident up there comes down here and yells at us about it. So, but yeah, I mean, I think it would be stupid to not, since we have the money, if we do have the money available.
Yeah. That price will always only be higher every year.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
And the other thing that I will mention, too, you know, being that Landwear is in town here, I think we got a fairly good price from them. So please realize that as well.
So do we have a, do we have a start date on that? Or did you already say that?
Nope. So they would be able to start at any time they wanted to. We just have a completion date, substantial completion date. I believe it was this September, maybe early October. And then they would come back and put the Batuminus workhorse in next year. But basically, we would kind of give them the whole summer and do it whenever they would want to. The other thing that we got a really good price on was the fill for grading that site. So, I mean, I think the county staff had gotten an estimate here this past winter of 60-some thousand dollars for a contractor to bring in the material, level it, compact it, to do the grading at that site. And Landwear gave us a number of around 20, I think it was 22,000. Yeah, it was 22,841. So.
I don't want to spend the 44,000 extra. So the total contract will be that 783?
That's the total project budget. The total construction contract with Landwear will be 612,511. So this is the total project budget. This includes construction, professional services, and contingencies. Yeah.
I'll second Steve's motion.
We have a motion, second, discussion.
We're doing base bid two, right?
Correct. Yep.
You got that all, Patty?
I will listen to the bits.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Anything else, Bob?
The second thing that I would like to discuss is in your con, packet, I also included a task order number 10. It's for basically Apex to provide construction-related engineering services. Everything would be, as we normally do, would be done at an hourly rate. As you can see there, the total amount would be up $86,000. And that's construction administration, staking, construction observation, things like that. And again, it's all on an hourly basis. So if construction doesn't take as long as we anticipate, there would be some savings there to the, to the city and or county. So.
Move to approve task order number 10. Second, motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried.
The final thing that I would like to mention is that we are going to have to obtain a temporary construction easement to rehook up the service laterals to the property just to the west of where this project is taking place. We've got the documentation prepared. Just wanted to make the council aware that, that city staff will be approaching that property owner, just again, to get a temporary construction easement, simply to reconnect their service laterals. So, that's all I believe I have this evening. I think, Lance, did you want me to stay here for the next item or Mr. Mayor?
Yep, please.
Yes, I'd agree.
Okay. That's all I have, I guess, as far as my packet goes.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
And let's move on to item number 11, downtown tree lighting conduit. Lance?
Okay, so the beautification committee, back when we were meeting, brought up the idea of running electrical wire to every tree grate downtown. So we could light up the trees at different times, like Christmas and other, other times. So, in looking into that, we'd have, we can't use Otter Tail Power's same conduit for their streetlights or anything, but we can go in joint with them and lay another conduit in, which we would own and we'd be responsible for. So initially, MINDOT wasn't going to allow it, but now, after many conversations and things, it sounds like it's possible. We'll be able to get a permit to make it happen. I guess the bottom line is, it's just not as easy just to put a conduit in with theirs. There's different feed points that we have to come from. I was thinking we could maybe split it up between, just in between the roundabouts and then another one to, to break things up. But there's different, like I said, there's different feed points. And in order to do it, we'd basically have to do everything from the north roundabout down to basically the fire hall. And here's a, kind of an exhibit of all the tree grates. So all the yellow parts, the yellow dots here are where the tree grates will be, and that's where the outlets would be. I guess right now, we're just looking if you're interested in it or not. Basically, to go joint with the contractor to put the conduit in, just to put the conduit in, not including any kind of wiring or any kind of outlets, a rough estimate is about $30,000.
We know that's how many trees we're going to have. I thought that was...
That's what's in the plans right now is for the tree grates.
Discussion, I thought.
Well, I think, I mean, you as a council or can remove any of these that you wouldn't want or...
I mean, I said, I didn't think we had gotten to that point yet, that we had decided how many trees were going to be done. I thought we had to wait until...
This is the final plans from MINDOT, or from the project? That's what they have as far as tree grates in that project right there.
So the investment just in the conduit is 30,000?
Rough estimate. It's going to be right in there.
So then to put another wire, or put the 12-2 wire through there, would be probably another...
It's going to be another substantial, no, I'm not sure exactly what it is. We haven't...
More than the conduit.
Oh, yeah.
Substantially.
And then you've also got the actual outlet structures themselves, the work that is takes to dig down and bring the wire up, hook everything up. So, yeah.
But this would be the first step. I mean, we need the conduit in. It's not going to happen unless it's, that conduit goes in with the streetlights. Otherwise, it's not going to happen.
So you're saying just lay the conduit and don't worry about the wire and the plug-in?
Well, yeah, that's going to be another discussion. We might have to ask for help from civic groups if they want them to help out getting the wire and outlets, or maybe electrician would help donate some time even, who knows. But I guess, hey, it wouldn't happen without the conduit in. I was thinking that, like, that money that we received from the right of way, the temporary easements and things, that was about 30,000. So that could be used for that. I don't know.
You said the conduit goes from the north roundabout to the fire hall?
Well, there, there's different feed points that we'd have to come from. So that's why there's added length. So those, the trees, basically from the fire hall to the north...
What if the conduit was just between the roundabouts?
Well, see, the feed, the one feed point to feed the, the trees on the south side of the bridge comes from Third Avenue Southeast. So that's where I was thinking, if, if you just want to do in between there, you're still, you're still coming from that distance and you're running the conduit right by those trees anyway. So it really wouldn't save much or anything.
And the one thing I will say, too, you know, Lance has been involved, Brian's been involved, we've been involved. There, we've been working directly with the contractor that's going to install the conduit for Otter Tail Power. This was all, we just found out that we were able to do this, I think, late, it was a possibility that we could do this late last week. So we've been scrambling. We had a meeting Monday morning with MINDOT, yesterday morning it must have been. We've been scrambling. So the 30,000 that we've come up with, please realize, is still an estimate. Yeah, so. But we think, we're pretty confident that it's going to be in that ballpark of 30,000. So.
Yeah, because at the construction meeting a week ago, or week ago, last Wednesday, we were told we couldn't do it.
Yep. We were basically told that it was, we couldn't do it. We had a meeting last Friday. Was it Friday, Lance? We had another meeting with MINDOT staff and they said very, very unlikely. And then we got a phone call, I don't remember exactly when it was, saying we think we can make this happen or make it happen. So that's, gets us to where we are today.
Anyone in the audience have any comments on this? Now's your chance.
Bob, is it each side of the street, the conduit?
Yep. So the conduit would have to go on both sides of the street. Yep.
So is this a, like, Arvic's putting in now, the big orange stuff?
They'd be an inch and a, probably about an inch and a quarter. So it wouldn't be very, very big. So, basically, what we would do is put it right alongside what they're going to be putting in to power the streetlights.
And that's actually at a cost saving, since we're going right, I mean, when they're plowing in for the streetlights and stuff, they'd put in another conduit. So if it was to go do it just, just for the outlets, it would be substantially more than this. So...
Yep. And the other thing, I think there is some urgency for this because we don't know when they're going to start putting this conduit in. But as you can see down there, it's probably going to be soon in some of these areas. So.
In that south intersection area, it's going to be, hopefully in the next month anyway.
Yep.
So with, in two weeks, when we have our next council meeting, it could be too late to make a decision.
I don't know for sure that, if that's the case or not. But I know when we talked to Tom Pace, who we talked to, it basically was our, our last conversation that I had with, with Tom, is he expressed some urgency. I don't know what your conversations consisted of, Lance, but...
Well, that's the thing that, we need to get the permit from MINDOT as well. So that...
Yep.
Those wheels turn pretty slow. Yep.
Can I ask a question? Do I need to go up there and discuss? This looks like it's part of an overall project to beautification of Pelican. This lays the groundwork for that. Is there any chance for grants in the future to do some of this, given that that's got to be a long-term plan?
The only thing that I will say to that is I know right now, there is some beautification money that MINDOT has allocated toward this project. I'm not positive if they've spent all that money, Lance. I know some of it is being spent as part of what's going on now. And then some of it, I think, is going to be spent later for when they do the trees, which I understand is, is going to be a separate contract.
So all the trees and benches and all that kind of stuff is in a, in that beautification?
As far as other grants, specifically for like lighting trees and stuff like that, I'm, I'm not aware of those. When it comes to like bike paths and... I'm, I'm not aware of those, when it comes to like, bike paths and things like that, we've already secured a bunch of dollars for those types of infrastructure for this project, but specifically for decorating trees and things like that, I'm not aware of any, I'm not saying that there are out there, but that's something that we typically don't get real involved with.
And with time being essence, there would be no time to be able to apply.
Correct.
I mean, as far as the conduit conversation goes, perhaps later for the wire and the, and the outlets and whatnot, but the conduit is what we need to make a decision, yea or nay, on here tonight.
And most grants, you can't have spent the money before you apply, but, just thinking about it, overall.
I think it would be worth applying, if we could find any, even, even if the conduit is in, I mean, we don't have to tell them the conduit's in, we just wanna put lights on the trees.
Cosmas strand?
What's the lighting, will you explain where the lights go, where are they shining on?
I'm assuming Lance, you're just looking for an outlet, so you can plug in a string of lights, and wrap that string of lights in the trees.
On the trees itself.
Yeah, in the tree itself. This is, yeah, this is totally separate than the city's street lighting system.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
And there are some cities that have this, it's not just Christmas, they have 'em lit up...
Lots of different times, yeah.
Well, what if bikers wanna come in and they'll unplug and then charge up their bicycle and stuff? We'll have to have that too.
The one, the one thing that was brought up by MINDOT is, they would prefer that the city put some type of locking mechanism on these, so they are only, they are only to be used for, by the city, and not for commercial purposes. They didn't say that was necessarily mandatory, but it was brought up and suggested, so...
I think we did some type of security on our boxes that we approved for Petiville.
So it looks like time is of the essence, if we're gonna do anything, we should make the decision tonight, or, we can shoot for the next meeting, but it may be too late.
It may, yep.
I hate, I hate that, I hate it when crap like this comes at us, and oh, we need to make it now, and we have to make this decision, and it's, time is of, is of the essence.
And we truly don't have a, an accurate estimate, I mean, it could be seventy thousand.
An estimate of thirty thousand, but oh, surprise, it's forty, we lied, and it's already been approved. Second of all, it's never gonna be cheaper than it is right now, because they already got the hold of.
Right.
But, there's also gonna be, if I count the yellow dots right, twenty-two outlets that are gonna have to be maintained by the city forever. So there's... Yes, it's, and that's, you know, we're looking at thirty thousand, hopefully, for conduit, another, let's say thirty thousand for wires, another twenty thousand for outlets, and then we have to maintain 'em for the rest of our lives.
Don't forget the locking mechanism. How much demand is there for light like that?
Well, it was, I mean, people are interested in doing it, I mean, it would look really nice down there, but, I mean, let's say another option, they, they were doing solar lights in the Peterson Park for their Petiville, you could buy a lot of solar lights and put on the...
Which were less than spectacular, I might add.
Oh, so, they're not an option.
But technology does change.
We're at six of one, a half a dozen of the other, 'cause I mean, it's never gonna be cheaper to put the, this conduit in than it is now, because it's doggone already, but at the same time, we don't know that it's gonna be thirty thousand, and that's just the tip of the iceberg, as far as that project goes, for the, for lights on, potentially lights on trees. 'Cause you also have residents down, downtown that, you know, that live above some of these buildings, are they gonna want Christmas tree lights on all night? Their streetlights are on all night, so, you know, that's probably not a valid argument, but, I don't know, I just, this is, I don't like the whole, time is of the essence, make the decision now to spend taxpayer money, and we don't know that it's gonna be thirty thousand, and we don't, you know. That's my soapbox.
Well, I don't hear much interest from the city council, am I correct?
Thinking. Well, can, can you find out by the next meeting, an, an actual number?
Oh, we definitely, we'll probably have it tomorrow, actually, but, not today, but definitely by the next meeting, correct?
If we find out by the next meeting, we can have discussion about it, and then if it's too late, then we don't have to worry about it, and if it's not too late, then we can talk about it.
Yeah.
It's just more fiscally responsible to know how much money it actually is, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, but that's just the conduit, I mean, I think we need to find out how much the wire's gonna cost, and how much the outlets are gonna cost, and how much the box covers are gonna cost.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna clarify, as far as what it's gonna cost, I mean, it sounds like we should try to get a cost for everything, is what you're, you're looking for.
And what's your electricity cost gonna be for having all those trees on all the time?
Yep.
So Lance, do you wanna do some research and get a cost on everything?
Yep, we can do that.
And we'll see if we're gonna add it to the agenda next meeting.
Or see if it is even a point, next meeting, or see if it's even an option.
Yeah, it may not be, yeah, yeah, 'cause if they're, if they're boring already, or too late.
Right.
We could make it shorter too, I mean, it wouldn't have to be that full length.
He said, he said that because of the transmission points where they're at, it won't be shorter, we'd be going straight by the trees and not lighting them.
We can look into that a little more too, just to see if, if it would be possible just to be like, in-between the roundabouts only, and see what we can do.
So we'll tentatively put this on the agenda for our next council meeting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Judy, do you have any feel for this?
Well, I know that at the Mercantile, we wanna do more for Petiville, okay, so I had Todd Langsitt in the other day, 'cause we're doing some electrical stuff, and he said one outlet ran the lights for the bridge. I don't know how much plug-ins you need, when he told me that, that bridge was lit by one outlet with LED. I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Report Steve, if you're asking then, so, I live in a town where this is down during the winter, it's fantastic.
The lights downtown, I know that they had talked, the merchants on the move had talked about trying to figure out how to light the tops of the buildings during the winter, now that's went by the wayside, but I know that that was one of the things that they thought, because the buildings are so interesting with historical different heights, that they would like to have the tops lit during the Christmas season.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Item number thirteen, we're getting to you, Chief. We have Chief, Chief Todd Quaintance, gonna address some police topics?
Thanks for having me, everybody's excited, I can tell. As you're, as we discussed last meeting, couple, couple policies, we needed to have a meeting where we can have discussion, or the community can comment on policies regarding our mobile video recorders and our portable audio and video recorders, body cams, squad cams, okay, put it in simpler terms. You've seen the, you've got a copy of the policies, is there any discussion you wanna have on them, concerns, retention, the retention policies require the data to be maintained, big question usually is how long is data maintained, policy requires the data be maintained for a hundred and eighty days, minimum. We can set it, depending on the type of incident, we can set it to last a lot longer than that, we have unlimited storage, so it's not a huge problem, we can set the system, as, as officers have incidents, we go in and we set, the default is a hundred and eighty days, if it's something that's a, we had a felony that we were at, we went in and we clicked five years. We hope that within five years, we have an idea of whether we need to maintain it longer than that, you can always go in and, and mark indefinite if you want, but, so we have, the tool has the ability to do that, so, questions on the squad cam or the body cam policies? Kind of, almost say they're almost boilerplate, you know, a lot of this is kinda dictated by state statute, so, we're not reinventing the wheel here, it's just putting it from the statute language into policy language.
Do we have to approve these policies?
I suppose, yeah.
Can we approve them both at the same time?
Is that okay with you, Chief?
Yeah, absolutely, sorry.
I move to approve both the mobile and portable video recorder policies.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion.
How, I read through this, and, yeah, it seemed like boilerplate, and, you know, most of my knowledge is from news media about it, so, that all looks good, but how are you gonna monitor this, and how are you gonna train everybody for this policy?
So we already had a meeting earlier in the month, and we rolled out the tool, we rolled out, showed, did a tutorial on it, Mike and I both were trained by the company that, that we're gonna utilize, we're both trainers, we sat down with the entire department, and we kinda walked through, the officers are actually, I took mine off already, the officer actually already using them, I explained to them, policy has not been, been approved or anything yet, but start, you know, getting used to using them, there's really not much you can do wrong at this point, because, because there's not policy, but they were all supportive of the idea of what the policy was gonna be, we will have another department meeting on it, and we'll walk through what the policy expectation is, as far as when they use them, when they don't use them, but, they're all familiar with, with the technology in one format or another, it might have been, it might have been a different platform, but they all kinda work the same, so, they understand the concept, it's, we pulled up on the screen here, and I showed them the website, how they need to log in, every officer that's worked, has, has worn the cameras and figured out how to log in, and they're, they're using them, so, monitoring it, to be honest, I, this is my philosophy on, on body cams, it's not a tool for me to use to, to go in and, and, I'm going, I'm gonna look at videos on certain types of calls, but I'm not going to utilize the video to find where officers, I'm not gonna go looking for problems that officers are doing, I might watch a video and, and critique with an officer how they may handle a traffic stop, so that when we do an eval, we can have a conversation about things, but I'm not looking for things that I can write officers up over. We will have complaints based on officer conduct out there, we've already, since they've been getting worn, had a complaint, and the cam or the footage from the incident actually resolved the entire issue, the complaint went away, because I was able to see everything that the officer did, and everything the officer did, I made it very clear to the, the complainant that they did not violate any policy, and they actually handled the call appropriately, so I mean, there'll be times that I review them, there'll be plenty of footage that I won't ever see, it's just, it isn't critical, I mean, for me to go in and, and be almost snooping on what the officer's doing, there's, there's all sorts of tech within, within it, I mean, I could turn it on and see what an officer is doing without them knowing it, I guarantee my officers, that's not gonna be what happens, I mean, that's, I mean, there's certain circumstances that we might do something like that, but that's, that's not, I don't feel comfortable using the tool as big brother, watching over people, because they're gonna be less likely wanting to have the tool on as well then, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not all...
I'm not done yet.
Yep, I'm, I'm good, I'm good, what are you thinking?
Yeah, I appreciate your answer there, 'cause you covered some things that I hadn't thought about, but I was looking through this, just again, refreshing my memory, and one of the things in there, it says specifically, they're not supposed to make private copies.
Correct.
So, again, how are you gonna monitor that?
So, I wish I'd pulled up the, the software, you can actually, if I pull up, okay, I can't stop it from happening, right? I can stop them, I can track if, if they download the, the, the video, I can track, and they actually have to go into the system and say that they're downloading it, and why they're downloading it, what they could do, that would be hard to track, almost impossible to track, is if they pulled up on the screen, their video, and they're watching their video, they could take their phone out and record what's happening, but here's the nice thing with Visual Labs, the, the software we're using, a watermark, even if it's your video, a watermark shows up across the screen that says Todd Quaintance, if I'm the one watching it, so if that video shows up anywhere, we will know who downloaded it without permission, because it's gonna say Todd Quaintance on it, even though it's somebody else's video, it shows, then my name would show up, the time that I'm watching it would show up, and so, Visual Labs did not want that probably to happen, previous platforms didn't necessarily have that watermark, you know, because I'm sure officers were doing that, recording it and sharing it with their friends, you know, this, it doesn't stop it from happening, but we'll be able to trace it.
Okay.
So, hopefully it doesn't happen.
Any other questions? Hearing now, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. The other one, parking fines, that should just, discussion point?
Real quick discussion, so here's what's going on, we've been pretty lax on parking enforcement in Pelican Rapids, and I wanna change that, part of changing that is I'm gonna have parking citations printed, and what I wanna make sure, and I'm comfortable with the number that you have, but I wanna make sure that I'm not about to go get five-hundred parking citations printed, and this council decides next week, next month, next year, that you wanna change the parking fine amount, 'cause that's gonna be printed on the ticket, and it's gonna be, the, the fine right now is twenty-five dollars, the fine has been twenty-five dollars, I talked to Danielle, it has been twenty-five dollars as long as she's been here, so, and I'm not suggesting you change the fine amount, I wanna make sure that, I wanna get a feel from the council that you're comfortable with that fine amount, because that's what's gonna be listed, I, I, you know, on those citations, and it's, and it is a common thing in our business, that a citation gets built, and then the state comes in and says, okay, you need to change it, and then all that printing cost is just wasted, I just wanna make sure, I've wanted to kinda get a feel from the council that we weren't gonna wanna change the fine, twenty, everybody's good with twenty-five dollars?
Everybody okay with that?
Do you still give warnings?
Yep.
You don't jump straight to a citation?
All we have done, it sounds like historically, has been warnings.
Well, I can only speak to when I worked here, that's as far as we could take it.
That doesn't necessarily fix problems.
No, no, you're right.
So, so that's, yes, we still have, we have a lot of warning books, I'm not worried about having enough of those.
I was just curious if you were gonna go away from that, and if there's a violation, we're ticketing everybody?
Depending on the circumstance, to be honest with you, my philosophy is, is winter parking, I'll, I'll give you winter parking as an example, I'm all about, for that month leading up to the part, the winter season, putting, as we're driving around, I've, I've taken cardstock, bright orange, bright blue, bright, you know, whatever colors, and going around putting those in windshields, I mean, officers at two o'clock in the morning are looking for something to do, right, so, putting those in the windshield, just kind of a warning, and on one side, I typically write parking warning, on the other side, I write the city ordinance, and it's just kinda letting people know that from this time to this time, when there's snow on the ground, you can't, you know, or whatever the city ordinance is, and then, but then, but that, once, once we get to, to snow season, at that point, we're probably not doing warnings, at that point, my recommendation is, and I've talked to Brian about this, officers follow plow trucks, and we write citations, the best way to fix it.
Absolutely, I agree.
Where are you seeing problem areas now, when you wanna give tickets?
Parking?
Or, we want to give tickets?
Parking?
Yeah.
We have an, we have an abundance of cars that park on the wrong side of the street. So, state statute says you have to park with your passenger tires closest to the curb. We have an abundance of people parking on the, with their driver's tires closest to the curb. So, they've done one thing. They've parked illegally. They've done a second thing. They've driven across, against traffic to park there. So, things like that. I mean, I can, I can give you a long list. I mean, I, I see those things.
It's, uh, they're staying too long in the parking spot or what?
Um, there's, there's a little bit of that. Cars that are parked on the, on the street too long. There's not a lot of that. There is, there is some of that. But again, it's, it's the opportunity, the parking warnings is how, is how we first take action, right? We, we try to fix the behavior through the parking warning. But if I go back tomorrow and, and the warning ticket is gone and you've thought it was important enough to leave your car parked there, I'm going to write a ticket tonight. You know, that's, because I was nice. I gave you a chance. You didn't care. So, why should I care more about anything other than getting a ticket out? Because we have to, everybody else has to follow the rules. I expect everybody to follow them then. So, that's just my philosophy on fixing behavior.
It's a, it's, it's a pretty rampant Pelican.
There's, there's.
Okay, any other questions there?
The last one is a conversation regarding our outdoor siren. Our north outdoor siren does not work. We found that out a couple of weeks ago. We suspected it wasn't working and then when the statewide happened, Lance and I both went outside and it doesn't work. Okay? Not any surprise. It sounds like it's been a problem for a long time. That thing has got to be old. I mean, so, it's important for us to have outdoor sirens. We have two in town. And, by all means, standing outside in this building, you can hear the south siren. Okay? Depending on the day. Okay? It's important for this siren to be working. So, I wanted to make the council aware that being that's come to our attention, I think it's important for us to start looking at how to replace it, repair it. I don't think repair is an option. I've already contacted a company that I'm familiar with from the Fargo-Moorhead area to get a quote for replacement. The advantage, couple of things I'll let you know about the new outdoor sirens as opposed to what we have. Well, first of all, the new ones work. The second thing is, is our sirens are direct power, meaning when something bad happens, the tornado comes in, takes out the power grid, the siren shuts off, right? Obviously. New ones are not that. New ones are battery powered. The batteries are, are charged all day, every day with a trickle charger for, they've got like eight, there are eight, eight batteries, the kind they have in a boat. Deep cell, deep cycle. So, there, there's eight batteries in there and that's what makes the siren go, the siren, anytime you hear these newer sirens going, they are running off of batteries. Okay? But again, the power's necessary there to charge, to charge the system. We would need a new pole. Anyhow, so we've got, we're in the process of getting a, a bid on that. Works out well. I talked to Patrick, County Emergency Manager. The county might be giving out, we should hear within the next couple of weeks, some grants for the sirens. Well, for projects. We would apply, would hope for a siren. It's a two to one match. For every dollar we spend, they'll match with two. I am suspecting this project is going to cost in that $20,000 to $30,000 range. Their grant matches up to $20,000. So, if it were to be 30, it'd cost us 10, it would cost them 20. My hope, when I talked to Patrick a couple of weeks ago, he had indicated that the projects did not need to be shovel ready. He said, if I have quotes in hand, it will help us for the application process. But he said they did not need to be shovel ready, which makes me hope that potentially, we can have the quote, we can get the grant and hopefully do the project next year, giving us an opportunity to put that project in our budget for next year's budget cycle. That's my, that's my hope. I don't have an answer. I called Patrick today to get an answer to that. I'm not looking for any money right now. I'm not, I'm making sure the council's aware that we have a problem with our siren.
If that one's old, I imagine the south one is old also.
South one's newer. South one's newer. It's not as old. I'm going to bet that one, looking at it, I'm going to bet it's a 90s. It's, so, this one, I'm going to bet is 50s.
So, would that one be, the south one be battery powered also?
It is, that one is not battery powered. I just want to take this in small bites. I mean, ideally down the road, we might have to change something there as well, or I would ask that we look at it. They can be retrofitted to do that. Part of the problem is, they're both way too low. They are supposed to be 40 to 50 feet off the ground and they are not, which obviously you want that sound to get out above, above house line, tree line, everything like that. Ours are low. So, Otter Tail Power would be, is mid, was it Midstate Wireless is the name of the company. They're getting a quote from Otter Tail Power to come in and put a pole up and all that. So, but yeah, that one is hardwired and low though.
Chief, as important as those sirens are, not knowing the status of the south one, is there anybody that does maintenance checks on those to know if it's ready to fail or?
Um, so actually, I had dealt with this in, in Battle Lake when I was the chief there. And that's how I started working with Midstate's Wireless. Because we were using a company out of Brandon who did not do annual checks. This, this company's willing to come out and do an annual service essentially, make sure everything's operational. And I can tell you the last, it's, it's a good thing because in Battle Lake, the last time they came out, they found something, they'd been there two years earlier to diagnose a problem. Last year, they came out and they're like, this is about to fail. So, and I guess I didn't, I didn't talk to, to, it's, it's Tyler's his name. I didn't talk to him about doing a service on that, but it might not be a bad idea.
Right, right.
So, that's usually only a couple hundred bucks. So.
Any other questions for the chief? Anything else, Chief?
Sounds good. Are you okay with us, again, there's no commitment at all, but are you okay with if that grant opportunity comes out within the next couple of weeks? Two weeks ago, he said it was going to be in about two weeks. So, I'm not sure when it's going to be, but are you okay with us applying for that and it doesn't commit us to anything?
Yeah.
Free money.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 14 is beer truck ordinance discussion. And this deals with Pelican Fest. And Lance, do you want to lead the charge?
Yeah, so Danielle put this on the agenda. We've just been approached by several organizations, including Pelican Fest, about having beer trucks as part of their festivities and things. Right now, our ordinance does not allow it. She is just looking, if the council is interested in changing that ordinance, then she would contact Lindsay and, and start the process. She just doesn't want to pursue anything that would cost money until she has some, some sort of feel for what you guys would want.
Is it exclusively beer trucks or food trucks included in a whole big?
Just, it's the liquor thing. It's the beer trucks. If there's something in the ordinance, and I'm not even sure exactly how it's worded or what, but it's, like in other towns, they bring them in and, and have their festivities and there's no issues for some, something in our ordinance.
But they have to come before us to get the permit to do it. So, it's one by one.
I think our permit has something to do with it's, the area's got to be fenced or something.
There's a double, I think it's a double fence.
Do they need a liquor license?
Details in there, yep.
Would they need a liquor license for that? I mean, how did?
They would have a caterer's license out of wherever they're licensed already. They would not need to carry our liquor license. They would have a liquor license if it's, my understanding is if they're housed wherever that they have a caterer license from there.
But they would have to apply at City Hall?
There'd still be an application, yeah. It's just, what Danielle's looking for is if, if there's interest in changing it, to have Lindsay reword the ordinance. And we'd incur cost with that. She just doesn't want to have any, an expense unless you guys are interested in changing that and being able to allow these beer trucks at these events.
Chief, do you have anything else to add to that?
I, I think the, the standard of having the fenced in beer, essentially beer garden concept is ineffective anyhow. So, I, I mean, it's easy enough to walk up to a fence and hand something over a fence. So, I don't think it's, it's not stopping what we want it to stop. So, there's consequences for being drunk in public. There's consequences for giving alcohol to a minor. I think it's okay for them to, to serve in those situations, in my opinion.
And I've never been to an event that has beer trucks that show up, that jump out and do a fence around their truck and then sell beer. It's, it's mobile. It's not really a thing.
So Lance, you're looking for a motion to pursue this?
Well, I think you might as well do a motion to just at least move forward with the, an ordinance change.
Someone like to make that motion? I'll make the motion. We pursue it.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll say.
Motion second. Discussion. Discussion. Discussion.
I just must live under a rock. I've never heard of a beer truck before.
So, is there a limit? Like, how many trucks can come or?
Something to be seriously.
Be in the ordinance.
That we could include that.
They'll have to get a permit to operate in town, obviously. And we can limit the number of permits for, you know, time.
I've been to events at the Kirk Bright and there's been two, three of trucks there. Never been at, I've never seen a problem with anybody being rowdy or anything like that. I mean, it's, I've never seen it be a problem.
Okay. Never seen, I've never heard of a beer truck.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same. Motion carried. Item number 15, Pelican Rapids Aquatic Center pay request, which was in your packet. Pay request is number nine to Hammer's Construction, $230,172.08. Lance, you were going to speak to this?
Yep, pretty straightforward. This is what the pay request number nine for that amount for the work that's been completed. If there's any questions about it.
I move to pay Hammer's pay request number nine in the amount of, submitted, $230,172.08.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. 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 Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same. Motion carried. Item number 16, council chamber meeting room policy, which was in your packet. Lance?
All right, this is just an updated meeting room policy for this, for this room specifically. Since Historic City Hall will not be able to be used as a meeting room now, just wanted to update this. It's very similar to what that Historic City Hall policy was. Just an update to, in case. Basically, it's just an overflow meeting room for if the library is booked up during the day, we can hold meetings up here. The one thing I guess I will highlight is the, on page two there were the scheduling. If the reservation is outside of City Hall business hours, then it would be, requests would be approved or denied on a case by case basis, just based on kind of who it is, if there's special accommodations or if there's staff available or things like that. So, we could add there if you wanted, because now I think it says, it has to go through council to be approved. If you want any, if you want, maybe you'd want wording there. If it's after hours, it would have to be council approved. I guess that's one thing that I thought of when I was reading through it again, but I don't know if that, I don't know that there's going to be much big demand or if you want that or not, but.
Only question I have is, do you guys have master keys for the file cabinets? So, you would lock the file cabinets first? Or we have to lock, start locking them every night?
There's keys in the key box.
There's keys for each of these, yeah.
My only.
What are you, what are you talking like?
Like the file cabinets. You have one?
Never had one.
I have one.
Oh, there's a key in mine.
Forget it.
So, are you the only one using yours, Kevin?
Apparently. No, I use mine.
I do too.
So Lance, how do you secure doors? What do you do? Like?
Well, everything is lockable. I mean, and if we're doing it during, I mean, like I said, if we're doing it during City Hall hours, every, I mean, people are around. Chief is around. There's police around. There's, I'm around usually. So, during the day, it's not an op, but like I said, if, we'd make special accommodations if it's going to be after hours. So, and that's where.
Chief, do you have any concerns with this?
I mean, that door isn't lockable.
No, this one. How do you lock these?
You need access to the restrooms.
They'd have to use the restrooms.
Right. But then they're free to roam the hallways.
And then they can.
Well, that office is locked. All the other offices are locked. The only thing we, if we wanted, we could, I don't think there's a lock on that printer room right now, but we could just change the.
What about the stairway lock? I mean, that's an exit.
It's an exit, so that has to stay open.
Yeah, so they could get upstairs. And then that's not even our business. You know, that's a concern. You can't lock the egress points.
I've not been up there since I was a kid.
Well, right, but I'm just.
Can they heat into that area?
Well, they can't lock an egress.
Goes in, it goes, it does go into their main building, so yeah.
And, you know, would it happen? Probably not. But it could. Especially knowing, you know what goes on up there.
Well, we're talking during the day when people are around. That's really not.
Maybe we could limit it to during office hours only, so it can be monitored more closely.
Correct, correct.
I think it would be a little sketchy to have an after hours meeting.
That'd be safer, yeah. Would, I mean, if, if you were going to include some kind of after hours, you would have to include Verton in the discussion.
Oh, yeah, they would have to certainly if you signed off on it.
I would think. The county association or whatever would have to figure that out.
Change the wording to only during City Hall hours and.
Yeah.
And be safer.
Safest bet.
Okay.
Anything else to add, Lance? Any other questions for Lance?
It'd be a good idea at that point that you brought up about that door. Ladies might not know, or Lance or I might not know if somebody walks out of here. To have Brian add on the building's budget at some point to add a siren or something to that back door, just so that if that door opens, them sitting in their office, would it be like, ah, somebody's going upstairs? You know what I mean? At least it'd make them get out of their chair and see what's going on. So, I mean, it might not be a bad idea if we're going to start having that.
Is that cambered? That hallway cambered?
Well, it wouldn't be a bad idea even.
This way it is, not that way.
Daytime meetings, like you said, that, I mean, don't cost much to buy a plaque that says, use this door. It's going to get loud, you know? There's a lot of those out there. So, you roll the dice. Is it going to or isn't it? You know? For a cheap fix in the short term.
The other side is, you don't want it really too loud because if there's a funeral upstairs, some of the sirens starts going off.
They draw up in business.
Would you like me just to reword things and bring it back next council meeting or just approve it with the change?
Yeah, why don't, why don't you reword it and bring it back?
Okay.
I had a question on that. Okay, but see, not to exceed 100 people. We can get 100 people in here?
Oh, easy.
I mean legally?
According to the, well, those, yeah, they go by the door widths and things and.
Square footage and number of handicaps.
With tables and chairs, not, but they're, you can change that number too.
About 70 people at the fire hall when we did the restaurant business, so.
Okay, you'll bring it back next meeting?
Sure.
Okay. Item 17, administrator report.
Okay, since the last meeting, I worked with Cork and Mayor to set the agenda and prep for the council meeting, attended an EDA, or EDC and an EDA meeting, attended a supervisor training provided by the village on constructive performance reviews, coordinated the rave alert for the statewide tornado drill, attended. alert for the statewide tornado drill, attended the local board of review and equalization meeting, met with Apex Engineering, MinDOT and Landwear, construction about the city utilities associated with the 59108 project, attended two housing study introductory meetings, uh, Mayor Fraser and I met with Greg Stang of People Service and discussed water and sewer treatment plant issues, attended a pool construction meeting, completed the City Hall meeting room policy, attended 59108 construction meetings and open houses, attended a safety committee meeting and participated in the CPR AED training, attended the Pinewood Estates bid opening, Chief Quaintance and I attended the emergency management summit in Perham, met with DNR officials about kayak landings in the park, uh, attended the multi-use building open house, worked with Apex Engineering, Otter Tail Power and MinDOT on the issues related to installing outlets downtown tree, and the downtown tree grates as part of the construction project. And then, just a last update here, I contacted McGuire Iron about the water tower wash, and they're going to get back to me on a schedule, but they are in Enderland, North Dakota right now, and they'll-
Oh, they're close.
We're on the schedule, but they're not exactly sure when, so.
Any questions for Lance?
Are you comfortable with the pool staffing progress?
Well, it sounds like Kate has a couple or two or three, she said, so that's encouraging.
Seventeen to go.
Seventeen to go.
I mean, at the last meeting, Brian kind of made it sound like we're good to go here, so.
Oh, we're not good to go, but-
No, no.
It's encouraging that there's some applicants now anyway.
In Battle Lake?
Oh, yeah.
Use some of their staff.
Yeah.
Well, I, no, it wasn't using-
They would, they would train them, and then they would staff them.
But we have to supply the people.
Until we were open here.
And we only had one person.
Hence, using some of their staff.
But we still have ads in the paper for manager, and-
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, uh-
July 4th is coming soon.
I'm nervous about it.
Yeah, I am too.
Yeah, we'll get lynched at that, pool can be open and it ain't.
Or all the features aren't.
Right, right.
Any other questions for Lance?
What were the water and sewer issues you talked about?
Uh, Mayor Fraser and I just wanted to touch base with Greg, I think we're going to try and do that more often, just, uh, we had some questions about, I don't even remember what they were now.
Well, it was maintenance checks, what they check annually.
That's one, and then we were talking about sludge hauling and just with that big, um, failure with the clarifier and things, we just kind of want to touch base with Greg more often and-
Okay.
Has that been, the, the maintenance or the repair that we had approved at the last meeting, was that?
Waiting on, no, waiting on parts, it's still been drained.
Have they started yet?
No, still waiting on parts and I'm not sure exactly the timeframe on it, but it's going to be a while yet.
Any other questions?
Oh, thank you.
Item 18, mayor's report, would you allow me to say I did the same as Lance?
Oh, yeah, perfect.
Is that three and seven, or do you want me to read this whole sheet?
Sounds good to me.
Uh, here we go. And a Complete Streets Project meeting on April 11th, the local board of review here with you gentlemen, economic development authority meeting here at City Hall, uh, technical assistance need assessment meeting, which, uh, Jordan talked about regarding housing, uh, attended, uh, Complete Streets Open House at the library, also project meeting, uh, attended the Pinewood Estates bid opening here at City Hall, uh, attended a CETA housing meeting at City Hall, also another Complete Streets, uh, staff meeting and the public meeting that have begun on Wednesdays at noon to 1:00 PM at the library, um, multi-use building open house last Thursday, attended a life-saving awards ceremony at the Pelican Fire Hall, uh, last Thursday, uh, conversations with the mayor to Historic City Hall, met with Administrator Royson to plan the agenda for this evening's council meeting, and then also, uh, attended the dare graduation at Viking Elementary School today. Any other questions?
How's your job going?
Good, no, it's, no, the calls, if I get a call, it's on my personal phone.
Oh, you didn't get a phone?
I, yeah, I got, I got a phone.
Have you gotten calls on it?
No, they all come on, personal phone.
He's just too approachable.
You haven't put the number out, though.
Okay, I'll take your number off, those blinky lights on, blinky signs on 59.
Okay, thanks. Okay, seeing no other business, motion adjourned?
Some.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Meeting adjourned.
Seven.
No, I haven't.
I haven't in 6:45.
Well, nobody knows your number.
It's been in the press so many times.
Been in the press?
Yeah, but does everybody read it, though?
I don't know, it's up to them.
That's right. How else are you going to be in the know?
That's right.